Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our February 10, 2025, meeting. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible).
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission that are here this evening. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, Commission Member. Next to Jim is Jeff Cohen, also a member of the Commission. And at the outside position is Brian Revard, who is an alternate on the Commission. To my immediate left is J. P. Vanoyt, who is our Vice Chairman of the Commission. Next to him is David Parent, an alternate. And next to David is Joseph Sanders, also an alternate on the Commission. At the lower table to my left is Cheryl Ann Tubby, our Recording Secretary. And next to Cheryl Ann is Kevin Pugini, our Town Planner. And I'm Jim Seichter, the Chairperson of the Commission. Our first order of business is to consider for approval the minutes of our January 13, 2025, meeting. Are there any Commission Members that have any corrections, additions, changes to the minutes? If none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 13, 2025, for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Any negative votes?
I will abstain.
And Mr. Cohen abstains? Good. Okay. It brings us to the first item on our agenda. It's the continuation of a public hearing on a text amendment, Section 4.7 Downtown Apartment District. And I guess, Mr. Pugini, if you would please just bring us up to date on this particular item, as well as you may want to try to dovetail it into your initial just discussion about it, into the second item, which is the text amendment for middle housing.
So, the initial amendment was proposed to expand housing, and then the second amendment kind of came out of that one. The second amendment will, if that one is approved, will basically negate the first one. So, you know, if you decide to just withdraw that one, or vote on it for now, until more is discussed, but essentially, the second one will allow it in all of the areas that the first one would and more. So, it would essentially get rid of the downtown apartment district, pretty much, and just allow it in all those areas in the same fashion.
Okay. Thank you. I guess, that being said, I'd ask the members of the Commission how they would like to handle this. Again, as Mr. Pugini mentioned just a few minutes ago, as well as when he put it in the staff notes, you know, if we were to approve the first, which is an amendment to the downtown overlay district, when we going, if then, when we take up the middle housing district, if we approve that, that's much more broader, it's more comprehensive, and at least in my mind, I think it's, does much more for developing, or trying to encourage development apartments in housing in a much broader area. So, there's two things we can do. Tonight, we could, you know, spend some additional time on, you know, number one, being the downtown overlay district, going over that, and perhaps, you know, approving it, continuing it, or whatever. Or, at least in my mind, we could be, maybe being, having a more productive meeting and just focusing on the second one, which is much broader. I know we've had some discussion on that in our last meeting. Mr. Pugini's made some additional comments to it. In my mind, and maybe I'm just a little bit too optimistic, but I would think that with the, with the middle housing district, that we're not that far away from approving that, or moving forward with that. So, I guess I just open it up to the Commission Members, just how they would like to, how they would like to handle it, and take comments from any and all Commission Members that would like to comment. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, I guess, you know, it's so rare that we have a meeting with only four people in attendance, and no big business. I would tend to agree with you that it might make sense to dive into number two at this time, because we have, it appears we have the time. And it's, there's some significant areas there worth discussing. So, I'd be in favor of your suggestion to dive into number two.
Other Commission Members?
I would agree.
I guess, that being said, Mr. Pugini, I take it the appropriate action of the Commission would be to withdraw number one? Is that correct? Or just continue that open? Or how would you suggest the appropriate manner to handle it?
I'm guessing just withdraw it, because, you know, we could always bring it back if we had to, if this one goes nowhere.
Okay. I guess, before we do that, again, it is a public hearing. I'm not sure if there's any members of the, you know, the public would like to comment on that. Okay. That being said, let's go and withdraw that. Yeah, I take it we need a motion on that? Is that correct, Mr. Pugini?
Correct, yeah. I would just...
Okay. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to withdraw the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we withdraw application 904-24, text amendment, Section 4.7 Downtown Apartment DA District.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Moving on to our next item. It's a public hearing. It's a text amendment, Section 6.38, Middle Housing. And I guess, Mr. Vanoyt, would you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record, if you would, please?
Legal notice, application 205 dash, I'm sorry, 901-25, text amendment to add Section 6.83 and amend Section 4.1, 4.5, 4.6, 4.8, and 4.16 to allow multifamily dwelling units. Changes will affect the R-6, R-11, R-15, RF-40, CB, CA, CB, I-20, I-40 zones. Full text available in Planning and Zoning Office. We have a memo from our Town Planner, Kevin Pugini, to Town Clerk, Town of Durham, Town Kirk, Town of Hampton, City Clerk, City of Meriden, Town Clerk, Town of North Haven, dated January 16, 2025. We have a memo from Town Planner, Kevin Pugini, to Stephanie Camp, South Central Regional Council of Governance, and J. H. Torrance Downs, Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governance. We have, what is this? This is the regulations of the multifamily housing, 6.83. We have Article 4, use regulations, Section 4.1, Residence District, R-18, R-15, R-11, R-6, also CA. It's all, yeah, of, let's see, just make sure I get it on the record. RF-40, CB. And that is it for that. We have a map, overlay map, and we have a PowerPoint of middle housing dated February 5, 2025. And this is one we just got. And then, we have a memo from J. H. Torrance Downs, Deputy Director, Meredith, for Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governance, to Jim Seichter, Chairman, Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission, February 10, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Vanoyt. And, Mr. Pugini, if you would kind of begin your presentation on this, if you would, please.
Sure. I just put together a slideshow, just to kind of visualize middle housing. Middle housing, as defined by the State of Connecticut, means duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and townhouses. So, I decided to kind of steer away from multifamily and kind of go towards more middle housing. I think it's a better connotation. This is just example of cottage housing. I'll just be giving some visual examples of that housing. Generally, there's vehicle parking, common open space courtyard area with smaller cottages around it. I have found some of these on lots as small as 20,000 square feet. And most of them are roughly about on, up to about three quarters of an acre to acre and a half, two acres max. And that's quite a lot of units on two acres. I think there was up to 22 units an acre on some of them I looked at. Here's another one. It kind of fits a little more nicely into, you know, some of these neighborhoods than, you know, the usual types of housing. That's another example. This was an example that's pretty common in, especially out west in Washington, there's a lot of these developments. They kind of are roughly 800 square feet on the inside, sometimes up to about 1,100 square feet, sometimes as small as 700 square feet. And so, you had nice common area courtyard with cottage style around a cluster. This is an example I found, roughly 11 units an acre. The lot size on this one was 31,000 square feet. The square footage range are all under 900 square feet. And, you know, I can give the link to this site. They have a lot of different developments like this, but they're all, you know, cottage clusters around a central courtyard. It kind of squeezes, you know, density into the neighborhood without it, you know, looking different than what a neighborhood could, what different housing looks like. That's another concept. I believe this was from Georgia. This one was kind of hard to read, but it gave a breakdown of the parking spaces and, let's see, but it kind of just gives a breakdown of how it's laid out, laid out a little bit differently than what you generally see, mainly the parkings in the front, or there's an access way around the back or the sides with common courtyard areas. So, that was cottage housing, which I think could fit in more into our probably single-family zones in a little bit better fashion. Then there's a, this is a sampler, signed to visualize the middle housing that the state is kind of looking for in this bill. And so, you have cottage court, side by side duplex, stacked duplex, fourplex, sixplex, eightplex, courtyard, townhouse, and guess what they call a live work. And then that, this is another example of the missing middle housing. So, you have single-family homes, and then, you know, mid-rise is kind of on the more upper end of that, but anything else in the middle is kind of what we're looking at with this text amendment. This is the map of the areas that would potentially be affected. Not shown as the I-40 over by the quarry, but I don't think there's going to be housing developed over there, anyway. But it would affect the I-40. And just a point of that, the I-40 uses are allowed in the CB, so you don't have to make a change to that district, because it's allowed, any of the CB uses are allowed in the I-40. So, if we change the CB, it changes the I-40. So, I did a little bit of research on the lot sizes in this area. So, the average lot size is approximately 13,000 square feet. Some of these areas do include larger parcels, chilt and whatnot, so, you know, it could have skewed the result a bit. And roughly 30% of all of these, all the parcels in these districts are all multifamily dwelling units currently, so that means either two or three. So, there's quite a large percentage already in these areas. The CA and CB districts, the CA district currently allows multifamily dwelling units on second floor or above by special permit, so it does allow for some. CB district does not currently allow multifamily, but much of these zones are along major transportation corridors and within walking distance to the train station and/or bus lines. There are a number of existing multifamily houses in these zones, especially south of the Route 5 district, and along, kind of, when it turns into South Colony Street, there's quite a number of existing multifamily houses in those areas. Since we are restricting lot sizes for new housing, another consideration, maybe allow expansion of existing residential properties. I've seen properties that may be too small for full commercial development, but they kind of want to expand. If it's an existing two-family and they're in the CB district, they can't expand to a three, or even add a couple more units, so that could be a consideration in this. I had a gentleman come in the other day that he couldn't do anything with his property. It was roughly 6,000 square feet. Wasn't really viable for commercial, and he couldn't expand the existing residential that was there. Route 40, the Route 5 district does not currently allow residential housing. This proposal would only allow it by special permit on the second floor or above. This was kind of something we just thought may work. You know, you still have the retail on the first floor, but maybe allow it above the retail, just to make better use of space. The industrial districts are our areas that aren't, you know, fully industrial, that may be suitable for housing. Obviously, not by the quarry, obviously, maybe not by some of the heavier industrial uses, but I think there are a number of opportunities in these zones, specifically the northern areas, kind of North Plains Industrial Road. There are some areas that are in, within that half-mile distance to the train station. And currently, Judge Square is zoned industrial, and there are some other, and Parker Place, I believe, is zoned industrial as well. That's the end of the slideshow. I just thought it would be nice to visualize kind of what we're sort of proposing with this text amendment. And any discussion or questions, that would be great to hear.
I guess, if you could go over just the text amendment itself. I know that we had, you know, some discussion of it at our last meeting, but I think we have some people that were certainly members of the public that were, may not have been in our last meeting. If you could, again, just go over what this multifamily housing proposed amendment is.
So, I may be changing it to middle housing, I don't know, depending on what the Commission thinks is a better connotation for it. But the purpose is to permit and encourage multifamily dwelling units, middle housing, cottage-style housing, and unique multifamily development ideas in existing and new buildings within designated zoning districts, and encourage affordable housing developments by the easing of the bulk building and lot requirements. So, in the R-6, R-11, R-15, would be, this housing would be subject to site plan approval in accordance with the following, the minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, and, you know, the rest of the other general requirements, bulk requirements have to be met if it's not going to be affordable, parking requirements, and landscaping. And these are just taken from the current downtown apartment overlay. I picked that lot size because generally, in those areas, like I said, roughly 13,000 square feet is the average lot size. So, you know, a little larger than the average lot size may accommodate for multifamily development, or middle housing development. And then, following uses were permitted, subject to site plan approval, in the I-40, I-20, CA-12, CA-40, CB-12, and CB-40 zoning districts. That would be a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. And this would be for new or existing development, so might, I might think of putting something in for existing development, maybe lessening the lot size requirement, or, you know, only allowing expansion of, say, you know, 50% more than what already exists, or something on site. But I haven't really thought too much about it yet, because a gentleman came in with that, and it kind of gave me an idea of only about a couple days ago, so. And then, the RF-40, like I said, these are, this would be all for market rate, obviously, this isn't for affordable. In the RF-40, it'd be special permit, residential units would only be able to be located on the second floor or above only, meaning there would have to be commercial use, as allowed in that district on the first floor, and a minimum lot size of 25,000 square feet. And then, E is the following uses, subject to site plan approval in all of the districts. So, for affordable units, there would be no minimum lot size. It would obviously have to comply with the parking standards, and landscaping, and sanitary sewers, and public water. But there would be bonuses for affordable developments. The Commission may approve bulk standard slash lot and building requirements to be reduced or enlarged, so enlarges is the height by up to 20% as site conditions allow for affordable housing developments. And the Commission may approve further bulk requirement bonuses for projects that would exceed the 30% minimum requirement for affordable units, up to a maximum of 40%. So, I took the idea from last time for the tiered with the table below. So, if you provide 35% affordable, you get a 25% reduction or enlargement. This would be, you know, setbacks, height, any of the other bulk standards as defined in Table, I believe, 5.2, and the other tables in the, in the code that pertain to that. So, yeah, it'd be only up to, you know, 40%. So, if you have a side setback of 20, you'd only be able to, doing quick math in my head, reduce it to about 12. So, it wouldn't completely negate, like an 830G would be able to, but, you know, at least give them maybe more of an incentive to develop affordable, and give them more room to build more units, if possible. And the Commission may also increase the maximum building height allowance up to 40% to accommodate substructure parking for affordable housing developments that meet the 30% requirement or greater. So, that's pretty much the entire proposal. I'm sure there's probably some things that need more discussion, but...
Commission Members with questions for Mr. Pugini?
Just a few questions. So, you're calling it right now multifamily housing, and you think you might want to change it to, like, call it middle housing? Is middle housing a zoning term?
It's a term defined by the state in the House Bill that I gave you a copy of last meeting. Generally is, yes. So, it would be, multifamily, I think, kind of has a, kind of a connotation to it, so, almost like you use the non-market rate instead of affordable.
Yeah. I guess, and again, the idea of feedback for you, I do like the idea of calling it middle housing, and I do like the idea of calling it non-market rate versus the word affordable, because part of it is, it, connotation-wise, if we're going to not call it multifamily, we're going to call it middle housing, in the same vein, we should probably refer to anything that's either market rate or non-market rate. You know, the, most people know the difference, but it's the larger mass audience, when you, when you use the term multifamily, people have a visual. When you use the word affordable, people have a visual. So, if we're going to, if we're allowed to do some naming of this amendment, those are the two preferences I have. You know, I could support the idea. I've seen middle housing in some publications, if you will. You know, so for me, it's some crossover, so I kind of like that, you know. I think it goes without saying, these are all the regulations because of, if we go the middle housing route, so if someone were to come in and develop a cottage-style development... I don't want to answer my own question. Is it all single ownership? This essentially is all rental properties, is what you envision? Nothing in here talks about ownership, because a lot would be, but that would be, traditionally, that's what I think, based upon your presentation, all of these would be rental units. Is that what you're thinking? I mean, I, you know, I know we can't dictate land ownership, but they're not being developed like condos. The idea would be...
You could probably have ownership, if necessary, almost like a condo would be, where you're not buying individual lots, but you could still own the actual unit. But I don't know who would want to do that, but...
Before, before your time in town, we had a large farm that converted to single-family detached condominiums. And, and the Realtor, the company sold them as lots. But it's not in a zoning lot, but that's how it was sold, real estate-wise. So, I, I have some, we, this town, have some, some experience with that area. That's why I use the term, when we use the word lot, and I look at Bob, you probably remember that. So, it was, you know, but I think the idea would be, single-family detached condos are not lots, right? It's still all in common. So, we should probably not here now, but make sure we incorporate something to that effect. Either, you know, because it can't be, someone can't say, well, it's my cottage, it's my lot, if it's a common ownership of the land.
Yeah.
And Janice would give you a story on that, but I think it's worth bringing up to you that we have had an experience with that, because all of a sudden, people are putting playscapes in common area because they think it's their house. So, or lot, you know? So, just a, just a thought. And then, the other, the other thought, since you're letting me go first, Mr. Chairman, I got the presentation. I happen to be in North Haven. So, when I drive down, and you've been to the town of North Haven, when you drive down Route 5, I shake my head because of the residential development in the last number of years since Amazon, that they put right on Route 5. And I think to myself, self, why can't we do that? I mean, they have the bridge, and those appear to be large apartment buildings, you know, and again, they're supporting the Quimbyak student population, the Amazon population. I don't know if we should discount saying, because if we're going this route, I don't know how, you know, I don't, I don't know how successful it would be, but when you drive down, it doesn't, it's not awful. Like, it's not, you know, it's, they're providing housing alternatives to that market, but it's right on Route 5. Years ago, I never could have envisioned it, and so now that it's there, I can see it, and it's working. So, I don't, one of your comments in your PowerPoint, you mentioned, if we're going this route, it says, number of opportunities in these, in the, sorry, RF-40, don't, we do not currently allow residential housing. I think it's worth putting on the table in relation to that, and I don't know if that's too far afield at this point, but I'm just, if you're, because I could, because you could visualize how they did it in North Haven. It's not in Washington State, Oregon, it's... It's not in Washington State, Oregon, it's next, right next door, and it kind of works, you know, and every time I take the train to Philadelphia, the land of the Super Bowl champions, I see all the residential, see, all the apartment and, and development, you know, along the, right along the tracks, you know, from Milford on down Fairfield County, you could see condos going right up and apartments right near the railroad tracks that years ago, people thought, oh, they're never going to do that. So it, it's just worth mentioning because I throw that in there as part of this conversation that maybe we should look at it for this, you know, I, I couldn't envision a single family home in a parcel on Route five, but if you had a large industrial spot that you want to convert to middle housing, someone might be able to make it work.
So we allow conversion now under the adaptive reuse, but, so technically, we could currently allow, but anything new wouldn't be allowed, so.
Right, and I, as I say, I bring it up now only be, because you, you, you mentioned, you know, this, this middle housing concept, and to me, conceptually, that's, you know, if we're going to do that, so that's all I had now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Other commission members?
Mr. Revard? Thank you. I'll piggyback that last, last question. On RF forty, right now, the proposal is second floor only, right? And that's where you were going, Jim, is, you know, why? And I think it's because of retail on the base, but I'm not, personally, I'm not sure that that's the way everyone's going either, so I think it's worth considering that. When I step back and I look at this, Kevin, all the colored zones on this map are the ones that would kind of now be affected by this. Two questions. One, how significant a change relative to what we've seen, is it? If we just think of this, it's all in the right area if we're talking about non-market rate and trying to be the, near the train station, all those things. How big an impact is it? And then, do we think it's going to encourage non-market rate development in this area versus where we've seen it previously? Like, are, are these specifics that we have here the right things for the people who might build this to actually come in and start doing it? I mean, it can't hurt, but do we think it'll spur some motivation in that direction?
I think it will, I think there's a number of stuff that's currently in the works in these areas, especially on South Colony and those main corridors. Nothing really on the Route five corridor, the main corridor, but definitely down South Colony in those areas towards the train station. There's going to be some state, there's state money available within the half mile of the train station, so in order for us to be eligible for that money, we have to allow it in the districts, and we currently don't. So that was kind of a big motivation for.
Got it, got it. So what you've proposed here conforms, it basically would put our zoning, you know, consistent with being able to take advantage of all those type opportunities?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other commission members? Mr. Sanders?
Commissioner Fitzsimmons mentioned about North Haven, and that's, that is interesting, and mentioned about the commercial and the reason for second floor. Is there any limitation on height? Because some of those buildings go up several stories and the next one in wants to be bigger than the, you know, tallest, so I wonder, what, what provisions are there for heights?
Just generally, what's in our bulk standards table, I think it's forty feet. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's forty feet with the ability to go up if you have the setbacks, so that's currently, right now, what's allowed.
So we're not talking about changing that in the zones at this time?
No, it just allows for further height if they do affordable, but I don't see anybody going that high. I mean, some of those developments in North Haven, I think, are maybe forty, maybe-ish.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Other commission members?
I just have a, just a couple of comments. The first is, when I'm looking at Kevin on, rather, Mr. Pugini, on, on B, when you're looking at, you know, R sixteen, eleven and fifteen, and then we talk about the, the bulk standards, they have to comply with that five point one, point B, but that regulation doesn't include R six, eleven and fifteen, I think it's five point one A.
Oh, yes.
As that.
Yeah, you're correct.
So I think that would be the, the first thing. The, the next is, when you're talking about complying with, you know, landscaping, if I'm reading it right, complying with landscaping according to section, you know, six point fourteen, point D, point four, which deals with the buffer and all of that. And I think that talks about, you know, well, you're, you're looking at having a, a buffer if you have the, if, if you're, what, twenty feet or, or closer to a property line and in the parking and all of that, but then it talks about, you know, a double row of, you know, arborvitae's or a double row of plants, and I'm, I'm looking at that and saying, I, I'm not sure, on, on a, on a side yard, that's fine, but I think when we're talking about a front yard, you know, a double row of trees and, and all of that, I think it's, it would be nice to have some landscaping there of some manner, but I just think that that's, we need to look at that, and that's just much more aggressive than what I think we'd, that we'd want, and I think to a large degree, then you'd be kind of obscuring the whole vision of, you know, of, of the development, so I think we, you know, we need to perhaps look at that, and.
I think I took that directly from the downtown apartment.
Yeah, well, I, again, that, I mean, that may be, but it just, at least in my mind, doesn't, kind of doesn't seem to, it's just, it's a little bit too aggressive. I think we all like landscaping and that, but I think that's just a little bit too aggressive. And then looking at the, the affordability section, where we get into bonuses and all of that, and I guess I, I kind of, this may be a question for our corporate counsel, and I guess I'll go back to always my, my comments on affordable housing, it's always forty years and all of that, is kind of what the, is what the restriction is or the, the limited of the, the restriction. But it seems in this particular case, where we're providing a bonus for someone to, you know, adjust the bulk standards, whether it be to, you know, enlarge or reduce whatever when it comes to the bulk standards, it would seem there, and probably have a discussion with our corporate counsel, that's where we can tie into extending the affordability, affordability period, because under, you know, whatever, eight thirty G, it's forty, but it doesn't provide, you know, any bulk, any reduction in bulk standards, so I think that's something that we would want to give some thought to if we're, if we're going to provide some, you know, some bonuses under the affordable plan, that I think the town should, should get something back for that being, you know, an increase at least in the affordability period.
Yeah, that makes sense to maybe give more bonuses if they're.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. I, a traditional, you know, it's, you know, a traditional, I think it's eight forty G or eight thirty G, excuse me, you know, it's what, forty years and.
Yep.
We generally get pushback when we're looking for a longer affordable term, but in this particular case, we're providing some additional incentives, so just think that the town should look for some additional benefits to the town with respect to its affordable housing stock.
And I didn't specifically say this, but this also would include senior housing as well, so just for, forgot to put that in there, but that would be.
Yeah. And, and the other thing is, which I'm shocked that Mr. Fitzsimmons did not bring this up, is the, is the parking, and I know we had, you know, discussed that, at, a little bit at the, at the last, at the last meeting, and kind of one of the things that I just look at is, is, is some inconsistency, you know, when we look at our parking regulations, I'm trying to look, we're, we're talking about, you know, multifamily dwellings, if it's, you know, a three family house or, it's, you know, it's three family, you need six, you need six spaces, but then if it's, I, I guess it's, it's a multifamily dwelling, how we ever redefine that, for three or more bedrooms, then you need two point five parking spaces. There just seems to be some inconsistency there as far as what we're requiring, and again, whether it's, you know, two spaces, three spaces, five spa, whatever it might be, I think we need to look at that for, you know, some, some consistency with that.
I think we were talking about doing something with parking maybe after this. I feel like maybe tying it in right now may be too much with what we're looking at, but, you know, if you want to look at that.
But it, it may or may not be, but I think parking could very well, you know, impact how a developer looks at a project. So I, I, I think parking really is, you know, is a component, you know, as, I think as you and I discussed, that one of the things that could impact what a developer may be able to do, or the, the extent that a property could be developed depends upon parking, and that, that the parking could, would be perhaps the restriction. So I think we, I, I think parking's an important part of this. And my final thought is, you know, as far as Route five, I think all of us look at, you know, North Haven with a good deal of envy to see, you know, how they've developed the apartments on, on Route five, but the one thing I look at, their Route five is totally different than our Route five. You know, when you look from, certainly from Parker Place heading north, you know, in North Haven, it's four lanes, there's, I think in some cases, there's probably even a center turning lane, you know, with, with our Route five, as you head north, it's, you know, two lanes, we have a turning lane in some spots, then we have it where the road narrows down from two lanes to one lane, it's just totally, you know, it's totally different, so, you know, in some ways, I, I like the idea of that. In other, in other ways, I look at it and say, it's, it's a real challenge. Where I, where I look at, there's more opportunities for this on Route five, is if you take Parker Place and maybe even go a little bit north of Parker Place, and then you just head south, and you, you go into, you know, South Colony, and I think there's probably even more, more properties in that area that would, at least in my mind, would fit into it. And certainly, you know, if you look at even from, I guess it's Center Street, you know, just heading to Parker Place, that's near the train station, that, and I know when Mr. Ryan was our economic development officer, or official specialist, whatever it's called, Don, you can probably inform us what the real title is, but, you know, he, he had spent some time and, you know, he presented us with some plans, is how that kind of, that area could be developed with this, you know, with this type of, with this type of housing. So from my perspective, I look at, in that area, it's, it's certainly a challenge, but with all of this, it really comes back to, to a large degree, especially when you're looking at the middle housing and cottage housing and all of that, it's, the challenge, I think, for a developer is to acquire the properties. And as you mentioned, in some of the areas, there's, there, you know, there's smaller properties, and I think to do a lot of this, you're going to need some cooper, not cooperation, but you're going to have, have to have the ability to acquire a property or two in order to, to do this, and I, unfortunately, I just see that as, as a real challenge, and if we, or if we, I, I say, when we do approve something like this, this regulation, I, I, I just hope that we have some developers that are, are very aggressive in, in, you know, taking on that challenge, because I think property acquisition is one of the, one of the main things, at, at least in my mind, that drives this, because, you know, we've seen that really in the incentive housing zone where I think that's, it hasn't, we've had that on the books for probably ten years, and we really haven't seen any, any movement in that, especially toward the affordability component, so. Those are my comments. This is a, it's a public hearing, certainly welcome any and all comments from the members of the public, just simply raise your hand, come to the microphone with your name, address and your comments.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Bob Weedman, fourteen forty-three Durham Road. First, I just want to thank the commission for taking this monumental task on. I think this could quite honestly be one of the best regulation changes you guys may have done or will do in the past ten or twenty years. I think it's that important. I really, I really think that's where we're going with this. I also love some of the questions and comments you guys have already made about this, it means you're really thinking about how it's going to be implemented, and I think that's key. As Mr. Seichter said, if it doesn't get used, it's all for naught. So, so I think this is, is excellent. My comments are mostly around what can we do to make sure that people want to use it? And what I'm thinking is for comparison is, if we make the regulations more difficult to use an eight thirty G, and you guys all know the difficulties that eight thirty G brings about from the commission's standpoint in particular of your limited control over the process, I think we want this regulation to be something that a developer would prefer to use, because if the rules are too difficult, they're just going to say, why don't I just go eight thirty G and do kind of whatever I want? So I, just have in the back of your mind, always think that, what's the alternative? And are we giving something enough to make it make sense? A couple of those areas, I'm just going to touch on, and Kevin, if, if you may have thought this out already and have good reasons why you're doing it this way, but in some zones, you have site plan review versus special permit, other, other ones have special permits, and I'm just not sure the reasoning behind that. Site plan review is a lot simpler process, less notifications and things like that, so if we can minimize those to only maybe certain zones, if that's appropriate, or certain sized projects or something like that, I think that would be a consideration. Also, the minimum lot sizes, it's somewhat of an arbitrary number because you're talking about multiple zones. You have, small lots is R six, which is seventy, sixty-two hundred square feet, I think, and then you've got some, the other zones up to forty thousand square foot as, as a, you know, a minimum lot size in those zones. So now we're going to change them and say, you only need fifteen thousand or twenty-five thousand in any of these zones, depending on which, which area you're in. And I'm just thinking out loud, it may be appropriate that we tie the size of the lot to the minimum lot size of the underlying zone. So if you're in an R six zone, all you need is sixty-two hundred square feet to use this regulation, but if you're in a, an RF forty zone, you might need a forty thousand square foot lot in order to utilize this. And again, I don't know if that's, makes it easier or more complicated, but that just may be a better way, and then it also sort of ties in with, every lot that you'd be working with would be a conforming lot in that zone before you start the process, is what I'm thinking. The affordable housing units, I like that it's, it's optional and there's some incentives to do that. As soon as we increase the incentives beyond the thirty percent requirement under eight thirty G, going back to my previous comment, there's going to be an incentive to just go to heck with it, I'm going to make up my own rules, I'm going to go eight thirty G. So I just advise you or recommend that you try to be cautious of doing that. If you'd like a longer timeframe, maybe it's not thirty percent affordable, or maybe it's eighty percent affordable units versus a sixty percent affordable, as you guys probably know, the sixty percent are the ones that developers really have trouble meeting, those are the hard ones. And as far as meeting ten percent state goal, the eighty percent units qualify for the same points as you get for sixty percent units, so if we had more eighty percent units or a longer timeframe for those eighty percent units, that could be an incentive for someone to want to do more affordable units for you, or give them a longer affordability timeframe. I think that's really the, the basis for my comments right now, but great work so far, you guys have obviously written more, I was really thinking we're going to talk about the other application first, so I wasn't as prepared for this one, and unless you're acting on it tonight, I'm sure I can come back with a few more comments, but I think this direction is really great right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, no, you're correct, I, I don't anticipate us acting on this tonight, but as, as I mentioned early on, I would hope that. that we keep up the momentum and perhaps in a month or two months be in a position to, you know, to act on something in this manner. And as far as your, I was trying to keep up with you, Mr. Weiderman, when you were talking about the 80%, 60% and how we're going to encourage, you know, developers to take part in that. So I would encourage you to, you know, meet with, with Mr. Puccini and to explore that more, and then put it into better terms, at least so I could understand.
Absolutely.
And, because, you know, I, I think we all want to see affordable housing, below-market-rate housing, whatever we call it. And I think we're, all the Commission members have been somewhat discouraged that we haven't seen a lot of that. So I think it's important to, you know, try to understand what the impediments right now with the developer are, and how we can, you know, under this regulation, look to encourage that more. Still meet, you know, be concerned about comments that the general public has with about, you know, with about below market rate housing, to take, we have to, we always have to consider that, how it's going to impact when we're changing our regulations, but getting a better appreciation how we can look to get more activity from developers with respect to that, so.
If I could, I just thought of one other thing that one of you mentioned, and that was the ownership issue of the property. And one thing, I think it may, I'm not 100% sure of this, it's your OSPRD regulation that I think requires that there be an association to manage the overall property, and I'm not sure if that's the right zone, but I think it is.
Yeah.
And so it doesn't, it doesn't really talk about the ownership, but that the, the common areas are maintained in a unified manner. And I think that's probably more important than the ownership, whether it's a condo or individual lot or townhomes or something like Judd Square or Towers, where their, where their apartments, kind of, but, you know, multi-story buildings, but individual ownership. But the grounds are all maintained in a cohesive manner. And I think that's probably from, if I was sitting in your shoes, I'd be more concerned with how the property's going to be managed and maintained, rather than specifically the ownership of it. So I don't know if that's something you'd want to incorporate into that for consideration as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public who would like to speak? Yes, gentlemen, to the right.
My name is Steve Knight, and I live at 289 Ivy Street. I'm a member of that informal group you've been hearing about that we've finally adopted a name of, Wallingford Works for Housing, and it, I'm, this is the first time I've attended one of your meetings, and I'm really delighted to hear that there's so much discussion about trying to, to find more attainable housing, yeah, built in the town of Wallingford. The state of Connecticut, I may be wrong, but I thought it was a year ago, they, somebody had introduced in the state legislature some, a bill to perhaps take away some of the local control for zoning, planning and zoning. And that concerned me a lot. This is, after all, the People's Republic of Connecticut, and they, the state of Connecticut's legislature find, have never found an issue that wouldn't be improved by their handling. So I really hope that, that you will continue to, to change some regulations, that changes that make sense, that will encourage developers. I, Jim, you said you didn't quite understand everything that Bob was saying. You should see it from my standpoint. This stuff is all way over my head, but I do have a lot of experience in town government in former years, and I really am pleased to see that you're looking at these zoning changes specifically to encourage housing that young people and seniors can afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who'd like to comment? Seeing none, I guess I'd bring it back to the Commission, or Mr. Puccini, if you'd like to make some further comments, based on some of the comments made by either Commission members or the public.
Yeah, I like the, the idea about the lot sizes, I think. I kind of just went off of the downtown apartment district with some minor changes, but I think it, it probably makes sense in R6, R11, R15, and then maybe lowering the lot size for some developments in, like, the commercial districts, because you don't need as big of a lot size for residential as you do commercial in some cases. So that might be a consideration, because I think some of the minimum lot sizes in the RF40 are pretty large, as well as the, obviously, CA40 and CB40, but CA12 and CB12 might be appropriate, and I-20 as well. Yeah, the special permit was just, because we kind of had a discussion, didn't feel as though, you know, residential may be appropriate in all areas in the RF40 as of yet, but, you know, that's something that I'm not, I'm not 100%, you know, stuck on, so that's, we could have a further discussion about that. The parking definitely, I don't know if, do you want me to amend the legal notice for next month, and we can discuss parking with all this? I guess it probably makes more sense just to do an all-in-one discussion. And then, yeah, I think the, it's hard to figure out bonuses when, you know, we don't have a certain density, so we can't have density bonuses. So I don't know if there's other bonuses that, you know, anyone has an idea as to what we can throw in. I was thinking maybe parking bonuses or something, but it's, you know, we want to encourage it more than the market rate, so, but just the, you know, state money, near the train station may encourage it more, but that's something we could discuss further as well. That's it.
Commission members, any, any comments on this? All right, Mr. Puccini, well, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Parent.
No, just a couple of complimentary comments. This is confusing, hard-to-understand stuff. And on the first reading, or the second reading, or the third reading, it still is hard. But I think that if we can stay with it long enough, we can get it into something that we can understand and with confidence vote for. The other thing is, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I'm pleased with the people we have in the audience. We've got people, you know, this is quite different, I think, when we started off with affordable housing, and it was Section 8 and ruining property values. I think we've gotten beyond that. I think that we're serious about it. When I signed the, when I signed or approved the Affordable Housing Plan, I, you know, I signed something that I thought that we're going to do in good faith, and so far I think we're showing that we're doing it. But I am appreciating the comments that I'm getting. Sometimes I sit here and I says, why does he say something? I want to hear from those things. So I, I think we're on the right track. This is really, I don't know, I went to law school and this stuff is still, I mean, this is really hard stuff, and, but I think we're on the right track. How you doing?
Thank you. I guess, Mr. Puccini, when we talk about, you know, parking and all of that, I'm not looking for, to revise all of our parking requirements throughout the, throughout the town. What I, I think, what I'm focusing on, I think, Mr. Fitzsimmons, you can correct me if you're, if I'm wrong, looking specifically for, with this, with this regulation, looking at, because it, you know, it references, you know, our parking in accordance with, you know, 6.11, looking at that, how that regulation impacts this zone, and looking at parking to see if it's appropriate or not to make, you know, some adjustments in it. I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, one of the concerns, you know, the, when we had the project on Quinny-Piac Street, we looked at that, and there was, you know, an issue with parking, and I think we all felt relatively comfortable that it was close enough to the Brothers Lot that there's some parking available there, and there's perhaps some, you know, some on-street parking. However, when you look at the areas that we're, that we're looking at to include this, it's a little bit different. You don't have very many, very many public parking lots. And I think, as I mentioned also, in certain areas of town where you look where we have just, you know, multifamily housing, if you go by, you see people, because of parking restrictions on the property, they're parking in, you know, on the, you know, on the front lawns, they're parking, and it's not all over town, but in certain areas, you know, they're parking, you know, on the grass between the road and the sidewalk. So I think we, we need to be, you know, conscious about that. And I know it was, you know, mentioned, it, when we were talking about Quinny-Piac Street, you know, it was mentioned, well, people will, they'll always find a place to park. And I'm sure that's the case, but it may not be where we, we want them to park. So I think we need, we need to be a little bit conscious about that, but, you know, also realizing that parking does create some challenges for development, and I think we need to be sensitive toward that. And then the other thing is, again, when you talked about the bonuses for affordable housing, to, you know, to take a, you know, a look at that, and get some additional, maybe thought and additional comments, hopefully from, you know, some of individuals that have been involved, you know, with this, and come up with some, you know, some other ideas, or some options that we, you know, would can, would consider. And again, as I mentioned, we talked about, you know, Route 5, or the RF40. If there's, if we're going to seriously consider that in the zone, in this, that how we can be maybe a little sensitive toward just that area and some of the challenges that it presents with respect to the, with respect to the, you know, the roadway and all of that.
I think an idea possibly for that zone, if that's a concern, North Haven capped the number of units that was allowed in their district.
Yeah, you know, that, you know, that, that may be, just some, you know, just some ideas. You know, I realize there's some properties, you know, there that, in fact, you know, it may be, you know, it may be, you know, maybe appropriate, there's probably some parcels that could be certainly redeveloped, but being just a little bit more conscious, not conscious, that's wrong the word, because I'm sure you're conscious about it, but there's just, you know, there's a difference between Route 5 in, in North Haven versus, you know, our Route 5, as you hit kind of Parker Place or a little bit, you know, beyond Parker Place north, heading, you know, heading north, that's, that's very challenging, so.
At the same time, though, I think there are some areas of Route 5 that, if they were to be redeveloped, may lessen the traffic on Route 5, so I think there's.
Well, no, that, yeah, I mean, that may very well be, you know, from, you know, from certainly my perspective, what I'd certainly like to see, and would be a challenge, I suspect, because of just the small properties, you know, as you look at Parker Place and you head, you head south toward, you know, Center Street, just in, you know, in that area, it's very close to the train station, and not only there, but also on, you know, on Cherry Street, in that, you know, in that whole area, where you have Parker Place and then you're heading south on Cherry Street. But, you know, there's, there's commercial properties there, industrial properties, and I'm sure those individuals are, you know, very happy where they're located and, you know, would not, are not interested in selling their, selling their properties. Although we did see on Parker Place, and I forget the name of the, the company that was there, that, you know, sold their, excuse me, you know, they, they sold, sold their, sold their property, and they needed to expand and expand it up in the Barnes Industrial Park, and so that worked out, so, you know, there was some additional apartments built there. At some point in time, would that happen in some of these areas? Maybe, maybe not, but we'll see. Anyway, with that, if there's no further comments from, you know, from the Commission, I'd entertain a, you know, a motion to continue this to our, our March meeting, and, you know, hopefully we'll have, if it's not something to act on at that point in time, but be in a position where, you know, we can certainly continue this on a, on a very aggressive timeframe. So, yes?
Chairman, I make a motion that we continue Application 901-23, text amendment, Section 6.38, middle housing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, with that, Mr. Puccini, if you'd take over the meeting and continue with our agenda, if you would, please.
Sunwood Development, 862 North Farms, erosion and sediment control bond, that can be released.
And at this point in time, I entertain a motion to release the Sunwood Development Bond as recommended by our town planner.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the bond of Sunwood Development Corp., 862 North Farms Road, erosion and sediment bond.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Moving on.
The second one, I haven't taken a look at that one yet, so that'll be.
Okay.
Annual report, any questions on that?
Anyone have any questions on the annual report? Yes. Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, no, no real questions. I hate the wordsmith, but second paragraph, I think, could be a little better, and there are, there are a couple of, you know, spelling errors in there, so if you just want to check those before it goes out. That's it.
Well, I appreciate, seeing I'm the one that's going to sign it, so I appreciate your comments. I thought I looked at it closely, but obviously I didn't. Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Similar, there's, there's two things. In the past, you used to list all the Commission members, and there's, unless there's a missing page three.
Yes, there is. No, there's a, there's page three. I had, I had the same thing, it was, it was, yeah, it's in there, Jim.
Here it is, sorry. Oh, it's the zoning enforcement report.
Yeah, yep.
Sorry.
Technically part of the annual report, but just separated it for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I had the same question on it, and then I saw it, because initially I said, why am I signing that?
Right, okay, okay. Thank, okay.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
ZBA January decisions, any questions on those? Actually, there's nothing. Yeah, so, notice for February, any questions on that upcoming agenda? And the zoning enforcement report? And just to remind you, there are a couple of trainings coming up, so if you are interested in those, just let me know, and we'll sign you up accordingly. I think there's one at the AquaTurf, and the Connecticut Bar Association has one online. And, yeah, that's it.
Any other questions for Commission members? Okay, at this point in time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the February 10, 2025, Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? We're adjourned. Have a good evening.